Welcome to our special town meeting. Thank you all for being here. I lost a little sleep on Saturday night over the Red Sox and a little sleep last night over a quorum, but here we are, so thank you. I'm Scott McDermott, I'm your town moderator. I'm once again honored by the opportunity to be here tonight in the Medfield High School Gymnasium. Since we were the outer edge of the American frontier in the late 1600s, the residents of this town have come together as a community to decide matters of interest and importance, and we continue that tradition tonight. I'm advised by our town clerk that we have a quorum present. Tonight we have 11 articles to address as the legislative body of the town of Medfield. But before we do that, I would like to thank our string quartet over there, Maryanna, Anna, Catherine, and Alyssa. Thank you. Members of the Medfield High School classes of 2019 and 2020, have a great year. Thank you very much. I will now ask our town clerk to read the return of service of the warrant.
By virtue of this warrant, I have notified and warned the inhabitants of the town of Medfield qualified to vote in elections and at town meetings by posting attested copies of the same at five public places 14 days before the date of the special town meeting as within directed. Constable Robert Flaherty dated October 3rd, 2018.
Thank you. Please stand. I'm very pleased to introduce Medfield High School junior Zoe Pollard to lead us in the singing of our national anthem.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? Or the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there? Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
That was great. That was great. Thank you so much. Thanks for doing this. Thank you. Well, please remain standing. We go through this. We remain standing because, yep, because at this time we have a moment of silence. And tonight, in the annual town meeting, we do a moment of silence for all of our friends and neighbors who have passed away over the previous year. But tonight I'd like to recognize and do a moment of silence for Bob Silvier. Robert Silvier was a member of the warrant committee. He was on the zoning board of appeals from 1977 to 2013. He was on the bylaw review committee and a number of other committees, and passed away just last week. So for Bob and also for the victims of the synagogue massacre in Pittsburgh, let's have a moment of silence. Now you can be seated. Thank you. And for introductions, I have the pleasure of introducing our town clerk immediately to my right. This is Carol Mayer. I also have the pleasure of introducing Mike Markucci, who is the chairperson of the Board of Selectmen, and he will introduce the executive branch of our town government.
Good evening, everyone. Next to Carol is Evelyn Clark, Assistant to the Selectmen and Town Administrator. Then Assistant Town Administrator Christine Trierweiler. Town Administrator Michael Sullivan. To my right, Selectman Gus Murby, Selectman Pete Peterson, and Town Council Mark Sorrell.
And I have the pleasure of introducing our new chairperson of the warrant committee, Michael Pastore, to introduce the warrant committee.
Good evening. To my left is Departing Chair Tom Marie Newton Thompson, Tom Mulvooy, Jack Wolfe, Abby Marble, Joanna Hilbert, Jeremy Marsette, and Sharon Tatro.
Thank you. At this time, we make a motion to permit non-voting participants to sit within the town meeting and to speak to the community as requested. We reserve a special visitors section for this purpose. Thank you for being here tonight. I would ask Evelyn Clark, the Administrative Secretary of the Board of Selectmen, to read the names.
Jeffrey Martston, Superintendent of Schools. Maurice Goulet, Director of Public Works. Christine Trierweiler, Assistant Town Administrator. Mark Sorrell, Town Council. William Carrico, Fire Chief. John Wilhelmy, Interim Police Chief. Joy Richudo, Town Accountant. Matthew Violet, Assistant Town Accountant. Sarah Raposa, Town Planner. Yvonne Remillard, Principal Assessor. John Naff, Interim Building Commissioner. Leslie Willetts, Conservation Agent. Roberta Lynch, Council on Aging Director. Kevin Ryder, Parks and Recreation Director. Pam Gardner, Interim Library Director. And we have with us Courtney Sterling, Planner with the Community Opportunities Group, Affordable Housing Specialist for the Town. And we're very happy to have with us this evening Senator Paul Feeney, Representative Janice Garlick, Representative Sean Dooley.
Well, thank you. Thank you all for being here, and thanks for all you do for the town. Nice to see you all again. And so I will, at this moment, I move that the non-voting guests who are sitting in the visitor's section be permitted to join our town meeting and to speak to the community as requested. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And I would now ask anyone else sitting anywhere out here, other than the visitor's section, if you're not a registered voter in the town of Medfield, if you would please move to the visitor's section. Okay. Regarding the town meeting guidelines, tonight we use the same meeting guidelines we employ at our annual town meeting, so I will forego the reading of all of these guidelines, but I will draw attention to some of the following. I will recognize the warrant committee for the purpose of making the main motion on each article. If the warrant committee does not have a positive main motion, I will seek a positive main motion from the article sponsor or from the Board of Selectmen. Immediately after the main motion, I will recognize a member of the warrant committee for purpose of providing the warrant committee's report. In two articles where the warrant committee vote is split, I will recognize a second member of the warrant committee to provide a minority report. As each article of the warrant is presented, the discussion and vote are not on the article as posted in what you're reading, but in fact is on the motion that is made and is on the floor. To avoid any confusion, I will allow only one motion to amend to be pending on the floor at any one time. Tonight, Articles 4, 5, 6, and 7 require a two-thirds vote for passage. I have authorized and approved three short presentations in advance of the meeting. We will have a report from Joanna Hilbert of the warrant committee regarding the deliberations and recommendations on Article 4. We will have a presentation by Gene Minio on behalf of the Medfield Cultural Alliance in support of Article 4. And a report by the town's housing consultant Courtney Starling regarding the articles on the senior housing overlay district. After presentations, I will open the microphones specifically and only ask for questions first, or clarifications, from the presenters, from members of the Board of Selectmen, from the warrant committee, or from the town administrator or the town council. This is not the time to debate the merits of the motion or to make a statement expressing your support or opposition. It's a period where we will be seeking just clarification. I will then open the floor and ask voters wishing to speak to the town meeting to go to microphones. This is microphone number one. This is microphone number two on this side. I will enforce a time limit on speakers. The time limits will be at the judgment and discretion of the moderator. Please do not be offended if you are asked to complete remarks within a limited or defined timeframe, and please appreciate and respect the good faith efforts that we bring to balance open and constructive dialogue with the expediency and efficiency required of any well-run meeting. When the time comes to vote on a motion or an amendment, it will be by my practice to initially take a voice vote. If I am in doubt as to the outcome of the voice vote, I will then ask for a show of hands. If I'm still in doubt or want further verification, then I will ask for a count by standing vote. If members of the town meeting doubt the ruling of the moderator, on any voice or hand vote, by state statute, any seven voters may demand that a standing count be taken. Such count shall be administered by the deputy moderator. Only one standing count will be taken on each motion or amendment. Once the voting procedures commence, no further discussion will be allowed on the motion until the moderator declares the outcome of the vote. All cell phones, portable devices, and pages should be turned off or to silent throughout the town meeting. Thank you. The proceedings for tonight will be as follows. We will address Articles 1, 2, and 3. Then we will use our customary lottery system to determine the order and treatment of Articles 4 through 11. Articles 5, 6, and 7 addressing the senior housing overlay district will be linked and will be taken together and in order beginning with Article 5. Articles 8 and 9 addressing proposed amendments to our town charter will also be linked and will be taken together beginning with Article 8. Articles 4, 10, and 11 will be addressed individually when drawn in the lottery. So let's get started. We have opening remarks from Michael Pastore, Chairperson of the warrant committee.
Thank you, Scott. Thanks to everyone that took the time out to attend this special town meeting. Your presence here tonight is a testament to your commitment to Medfield. Tonight you're going to vote on a slate of 11 articles, and you're going to hear a lot from the warrant committee members tonight throughout these various articles about process concerns. The basis of those concerns really couldn't be avoided, as the very nature of special town meeting is that you don't have as much time with each article, and the dissemination of information to the taxpayer is not as streamlined as with annual town meeting. That does not mean, however, that the warrant committee is willing to abdicate its responsibility to fully vet each article and to only recommend passage of those articles the majority feels are prudent for the town at this time. It is our responsibility to dig into facts, ask the tough questions, and figure out what unforeseen financial pitfalls might lie ahead. In instances that the majority did not think there was enough available information, or that there were more questions than answers, we voted to dismiss. This does in no way mean the article was without merit, or that the warrant committee would withhold its support in the future, given more time and more complete information. As always, it is up to you, the taxpayers, to make a final decision. Ultimately, it is my strong belief that everyone involved, from the selectmen to the department heads, to the article sponsors, to supporters and opponents, want the same thing, and that is what's best for Medfield. With that as our guiding principle, I think we're all in good hands.
Thank you, Michael. Thank you. First article is an article to authorize the Board of Selectmen to establish a 25-mile-per-hour speed limit on any roadway in a thickly settled or business district. I understand we do not have a positive motion from the warrant committee. Do we have a positive motion from the floor? If there's no positive motion, I'm going to move to dismiss this. So I move to dismiss Article 1. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Article 1 is dismissed. I also understand that for Article 2, which is an article to authorize the Board of Selectmen to establish designated safety zones with a 20 mile per hour speed limit, that we also do not have a positive motion from the warrant committee. Do we have a positive motion? If we don't, I will move to dismiss. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That article is dismissed. Article 3 is an article to authorize the Board of Selectmen to accept the gift of land, 11.8 acres from the south side of Bridge Street. It's 11.8 acres, and we have a positive motion from the warrant committee from Tom Mulvooy.
Thank you. Article 3, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to accept the gift of land from the estate of Carol N. Starkman consisting of an unfull parcel of land containing approximately 11.8 acres located on the southerly side of Bridge Street and shown on Medfield Assessors' Map 41, its parcel 14. Title references Norfolk County Registry District Certificate of Title Number 122183 and Norfolk Probate Court Document Number 18P1395E-A for conservation purposes or due or after anything in relation thereto. The real estate in question, a parcel of land off Bridge Street across from Marsh Drive that beats the Charles River at its southerly edge, comprised of 11.8 acres or 514,008 square feet that are mainly in undeveloped status. Of the total, 8.3 acres are classified as low floodland with an appraised value of $16,600, and 3.5 acres are classified as low wetland with an appraised value of $7,000. Total taxes paid on both units in 2017 amounted to $401.91 for the assessors office. For the first two quarters of the current fiscal year, total taxes paid for both sections amounted to $216.18. Going forward, it is expected that taxes on the property will rise slightly. According to Town Council, the major liability the town incurs when it accepts the gift of land is the loss of future tax revenue, in this case some $500 a year for the immediate future. That's why formal acceptance is required on a conscious decision to afford the future tax revenue and return for public benefit depending on the town's ownership. A potential public benefit is a provision in the will specifically restricting the town's future use of land for conservation. This will result in its being characterized as Part 97 land and generally protected from future development. Move that Article 3 be approved to set up the mark.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to accept this gift of land. Is there any comments or any questions? If there are none, we'll put it to a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You know, the team that the motion carries. And now I'm going to invite to microphone number three, Phil Burr, who, on the subject of accepting gifts of land from the town, would like to make a comment and recognition.
I'm Phil Burr, 14 Summer Street, Medfield, Mass. I'm trying to give a demonstration. One of the main purposes is I'm privileged from the Conservation Commission to represent them in the acceptance of land from Barbara Layton. And Barbara's basic wish, I must get it correct here, that donation of land must be in the name of the Layton family and share credit to her dad and mom. I make certain that it must get credit to the dad and mom. The land was given to the community earlier. Barbara left recently, and my responsibility is to give some identification to her. The father and mother's name, Noel Layton and Myra Layton. Now let's go back from that point after giving identification. And can I do justice, I'm asking myself this, can I do justice to Barbara for how she has done for Medfield? And most of my information came from the US, I shouldn't say the US historian, but Medfield historian Richard Asaga, and so Richard has all of the information, which was to be about five pages, so I condensed it a little bit, so bear with me. But can I do justice to Barbara? Barbara graduated in class in 1936. I feel she gave her life service to Medfield. She knew Barbara, you knew Medfield. Richard had a title for her, the unofficial historian of Medfield. Well, Richard's, there's three of them now, we've got three historians, and they all meet the Barbara, the ones who are still living, I guess, obviously. She was identified at the Conservation Committee to me. Now, some of her, limited, and I can't give details on it, but she was the curator at the Historical Society, which is a title, but there's a lot of work to it, from 1950 to 2000. She was a caretaker of the Historical Peak House, which is a houses, just as a houses and a guy, but it doesn't tell you everything that goes on there because there's so many details, both societies, time elements. You might give the title, the title's there, but the time element.
It's a commitment to it. Then I've got the next point was made, that she served on the original grist mill at Kingsbury's Preservation and Restoration. Again, commitment, but you can't really know Barbara unless you know she's all true commitment and total personality. The land is going to be called Rocky Lane Conservation Preservation. Richard had a couple highlights I'll throw in. On sports, he said in the Celtics, she was a Celtics fan, but I think she was also a Red Sox fan too. My observation is limited. When I was growing up, I knew Barbara personally, well, you know her personally, you get a little emotional about her, but I was the baseball player playing the worst, lowest position on the field on the team, which was right field. Well, the right field, now Mookie, excuse me, Mookie Betts, excuse me on this one, but the right fielder was always the one they threw in last. And the right field was right next to the tennis court, and I think that's one thing I think Richard did include, that she was an avid tennis player. And she and Madeline Grant, if you knew Madeline Grant, those people, they were down there playing tennis all the time. And then, we got a couple of names here, I'll throw out, the local people. People like Clint Clark, Earl Kerr, and the Eyefolders were knocking home runs into their games and completely interrupted their games, but Barbara and Madeline always went on with the game, and God bless them. She was also an avid reader, and I know she was avid in sports. That's my story on Barbara. God bless her.
Okay, so I would move that we send a thank you and 100th birthday wishes to Barbara Layton and to her family. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Phil. Okay, we're going to go to the lottery. First articles we're going to look at tonight are Articles number 8 and 9. Articles number 8 and 9. Article number 8 is an article to amend the town charter to change from an elected town clerk to an appointed town clerk. This was offered by the Board of Selectmen, and warrant committee member Abby Marble is going to provide a motion and a report.
Great. Article 8 says to move that the town propose amendments to the town charter to be submitted to the voters at the next annual town meeting for the election of officers for their approval pursuant to the Home Rule Procedures Act, GL Chapter 43B, Section 10 and 11, as follows. Amend Article 3, the Board of Selectmen, Section 3.3, appointments by adding in first line after Town Administrator, the Town Clerk. And amend Article 6, Other Elective Offices, Section 6.1, elective offices designated by deleting (a) the Town Clerk for a term of three years and relettering the remaining subsections. Transitional provision, the foregoing amendment shall take effect upon the completion of the currently serving town clerk's current elected term. And do you want to report?
Please.
So Article 8 asks town meeting to vote on amendments to the town charter with regard to the election of officers that will be submitted to the voters at the next annual town meeting. The article submitted by the Board of Selectmen is geared toward making the office of Town Clerk an appointed position, a switch from its traditional status as an elected post. Our current employment structure at Town Hall has worked for many years, but times have changed. Increased responsibilities and legal implications have made the Town Clerk's job a more formidable position, and that has moved some in Medfield to think that voters should give town leadership the authority to hire an individual with an up-to-date skill set in municipal affairs who will readily take on the expanded roles that the 21st century has brought to the office. Changing our town charter to reflect the new realities that a Town Clerk faces will enable the leaders at Town Hall to ensure that the Town Clerk has both the resume and the necessary managerial skills to run a Town Clerk's office efficiently in the modern era. A Town Clerk's mandate covers wide responsibilities, including communicating and enforcing town, state, federal regulations regarding voting, civil rights, adoption, marriage, and immigration among other issues of governing. This proposed change in our charter is no wire criticism of Carol Mayer, our current elected Town Clerk. She should be commended for her initiative in keeping up with ever-changing regulations and our continuing commitment to do the job well. The warrant committee recommends passage of Article 8.
Is there any discussion or questions regarding Article 8? Please, microphone number two.
Good evening.
Please, if you would, just identify yourself and your address.
Certainly. My name's Nathan Bazinet. I'm a resident of Medfield at 30 Oriole Road in Precinct 3.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator. Thanks for the opportunity to speak on Article 8 regarding my support for an elected town clerk. Fortunately, this is not an evening for a World Series game, as I believe the special town meeting might be as sparsely attended as the warrant committee's last meeting. I've safely ventured to say that watching the game was time spent more joyably than time spent at a warrant committee meeting. Fortunately, again, though, the warrant committee and a few other concerned residents, Article proponents, the town attorney, the town administrator, et cetera, did attend, myself included. I'm also in attendance tonight to vote positively on the sewer and water board's proposal, positively on the center's proposal, et cetera, to vote no, and to urge my fellow Medfield residents at this special town meeting to vote no on the proposal to modify the town charter to change the elected position of Town Clerk from an elected position to an appointed one. A few surface-level arguments have been made supporting the change. One, that aside from the current Town Clerk, it's probable that no one in town would be interested in performing the role, and by extension, standing for election in town every three years. Two, that since the remainder of full-time positions at Town Hall are appointed, that this role should be appointed also. And three, that this role is so technically challenging as to preclude a resident of the town from doing or wanting to do the job. I'd like to say that, first of all, I believe this town is chock full of intelligent, capable people who can do this job. This is Medfield and Greater Boston, where 80% plus of residents hold bachelor's level degrees or above, and frankly, I believe the remaining 20% are capable also. However, being capable and being interested are different things. To this end, we currently have no idea who among town residents might be disposed to do the job. Our town's elected leaders have worked diligently to gain input from Medfield seniors regarding their opinions on senior housing, but no survey has been put forth into all town residents seeking their opinions on this change to our town's charter, effectively Medfield's constitution. Nor has its survey been put to the town's employees regarding their opinions on shouldering increased duties in their current roles to support the office of Town Clerk. This point is simply a point of fairness as to be as inclusive as possible to obtain the viewpoints of as many residents as possible, and also is a point of fairness to our town's individual employees, whom some would appear to be assuming do not have enough work in their current roles. At a minimum, surveys of residents and town employees are a necessary first step prior to entertaining this article for passage. I also propose that quality, not the red herring of cost savings, should be the goal where elections, birth and death certificates, et cetera, are concerned. These are basic services that benefit all town residents, not just one demographic. The town will have to pay its current appointed employees more if they are asked to shoulder more duties as assistant town clerks. I believe that a better trend to follow is to follow the trend of increased investment in town services, for example, ALS, new public safety building, et cetera, by increasing the specific budget of our elected Town Clerk to allow for at least one full-time Town Clerk assistant who can be fully devoted to aiding in handling people's issues, issues such as elections, but also those administrative roles such as handling the 1900 dog licenses here in Medfield. I can confidently say that myself and other residents in town are of the mind that the Town Clerk is the eyes and ears of Medfield's residents in the Town Hall. Having the guarantee that a fellow citizen is advocating for us 12,000-plus strong is a powerful deterrent against possible actions which a non-resident may simply not consider. It really is about having skin in the game and being accountable directly, on call 24/7 if need be, to one's neighbors and one's community. Contrast this with an appointed Town Clerk residing outside of town, possibly living on the Cape or on the North Shore, for whom this is just a job, basically a means to an ends career-wise. How can such a person reliably deliver a birth certificate at 5:00 a.m. prior to your family's flight out of Logan so as to provide identification for a young child to board a flight to points unknown? Further, the town is currently experiencing job vacancies in a number of very important, appointed, not elected roles, including police chief, facilities director, director of sewer and water, and library director, to name a few. The town has always had a candidate for the full-paid position of Town Clerk. The town has always had a candidate for the full-paid position of town clerk. It is apples to oranges to compare volunteer, unpaid, or sparsely paid elected offices like library trustee or board of assessors to a full-time paid job. The elected incumbent has laudably achieved professional designations in the field of municipal town clerk duties. I fully expect the successor to do the same, elected or appointed. In that vein, all towns surrounding Medfield, save population 24,000 Walpole, maintain elected town clerks with commensurate staff to do the job. For example, Sherborne, Town Clerk plus two staff, Dover, Town Clerk plus one staff, Milis, Town Clerk plus two staff, Norfolk, Town Clerk plus one staff, Walpole, Town Clerk plus three staff. A special mention must be made here that Walpole made the switch from an elected to an appointed town clerk in 2017, and had just one candidate to finally choose from for the selectmen, a current employee at Town Hall there. Note that two-thirds of towns in the Commonwealth choose elected town clerks, and just last year, 2017, Norfolk and Hopkinton residents voted at the polls to keep the role of town clerk as an elected position. There are further practical considerations which must be examined prior to this change being made. We ought to keep transparency in the salary and benefits package of the town clerk, as this would hereafter be decided in executive private session of the Board of Selectmen. We also need to keep the ease of possibly recalling an elected official virtually unassailable legally if properly done, versus being limited to firing for cause and exposing the town to the very real threat of termini litigation. I support the long beneficial practice of electing the town clerk of Medfield. Playing on fears, i.e. no resident of Medfield could or would stand for and be able to do this job, is a scare tactic. I think this tactic unfairly challenges the wisdom of the residents of our town. We are still indeed fit to elect the Board of Selectmen, are we not? I believe that not simply two or three, but all of the approximately 8,700 voting-aged residents of the town of Medfield should have the opportunity and the right to select the voter, the holder of this important office, the sole real elected and full-time people's office in the town and in Town Hall. I respectfully ask my fellow residents of Medfield to vote no on Article Eight. Thank you.
Thank you. Microphone number one.
Sharon Tetro, 12 West Street. Obviously, I'm the one dissenting opinion from the Warrant Committee as I came out here. I solely am dissenting because this article, as well as Article Nine, are town charter issues. I feel like they believe they need to have the full due process of an annual town meeting in order to go through that, for us to have a longer time to look at them, for there to be a public warrant hearing and such. Both Articles Eight and Nine, if you dissent on them, they can be brought back up in April, and they will both have the same exact timing. Articles Eight and Nine require a vote of the town on ballot, and the vote for these two will not take place until March, and they will not be effective until the following town meeting. So if you wait and vote on these in April, they still have time to do that before town meeting in 2020. That's all.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments on Article Eight? So we have a positive motion on the floor. The positive motion is to amend the town charter to change from an elected town clerk to an appointed town clerk. If there's no further discussion, we'll put it to a vote. All in favor of this amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, we'll do a show of hands. So if you are in favor of this amendment, please raise your hand. And if you're opposed, I'm gonna deem it fails to pass. Article Nine. Article Nine is an amendment of the town charter to change the date of the annual town meeting from the last Monday in April to the first Monday in May. We have a positive motion from the Warrant Committee. Warrant Committee, Jerry Marsette.
Move that the town propose an amendment to the town charter to be submitted to voters at the next annual town meeting or the election of officers for their approval pursuant to the Home Rule Procedures Act, General Law, Chapter 43B, Sections 10 and 11 as follows. Amend Article Two Legislative Branch, Open Town Meeting, Section 2-2, time of annual town meeting by deleting last Monday in April and replacing with first Monday in May. Transitional provision, this charter amendment shall become effective beginning with the 2020 annual town meeting.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions about Article Nine? If there are none, we, everybody understand what we're doing here? It's really, we're just moving back. The proposal is to amend the charter to move back the town meeting by one week. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Show of hands, please, if you would. If you're in favor, please raise your hand. If you're opposed, and I'm gonna deem that the motion carries. Okay, the next articles we're gonna consider are Articles Five, Six, and Seven. We'll start with Article Five. Article Five is an article to amend the town code, Article 300, zoning by adding a new section, 300-12.17, to create a senior housing residential development overlay district. This is an article that was sponsored by the Planning Board, the Senior Housing Committee, and the Board of Selectmen. We do have a positive motion, and we will have a member from the Planning Board speak to this as well. The positive motion is gonna be offered by Warrant Committee member Tom Marie.
Article Five, move that Article Five be approved as set out in the warrant.
You have a report, please.
I do. Article Five is multifaceted and purposeful, and in addition, it is necessary for our beloved town to approve passage. Including exempt parcels, residential zoning in the town of Medfield is approximately 95%. Only Tilden Village, established in the 70s, and Turtle Brook, established in the late 90s, have senior age-restricted housing, both of which have comprehensive permits without overlay districts. If you don't know the definition of an overlay district, think of it as a mapped area where a specific set of additional regulations, which may be less or more strict, are applied to the usual zoning classification, with the intent of providing some feature or features considered to be in the public interest. Onto the reasoning of what makes this zoning bylaw amendment in the public interest. It will bring more balance to the town's housing inventory. It will meet the needs of people as they age and/or become disabled. Many other neighboring towns in the Commonwealth have senior overlay districts. It would, beyond the Hinckley property, if Articles Five, Six, and Seven are passed, apply to other sites, roughly 15 in our town. It will not overload our infrastructure or demand on-town resources. Since the zoning overlay doesn't in and of itself change the permitted land use, there are three checkpoints or controls that the Planning Board will need to approve prior to issuing a special permit to any potential developers. Ultimately and factually, the Planning Board will hold most of the discretion. No subsidies will be provided to a potential developer. Please bear in mind that 54% of our town is open space. A senior overlay district will be revenue-positive, and our town is in fact in need of more revenue. Kindly keep in mind what was passed at our last year's annual town meeting. A town-wide budget override, creation of ALS, town-wide master plan study, initial funding for a new park and rec feasibility. Though individually proposed, amendments can, as they should, conform to a conference of plan. Some hold the risk of being adopted without sufficient awareness or consideration of planning principles. This is not the case for Article Five. The risks or concerns, depending upon your position, may be negative or neutral, and those that are associated and soon to be shared, can present a conundrum. But these concerns are in all likelihood less crucial than the aforementioned reasons or justifications. Risks and concerns include: there's no guarantee of affordability; there is no guarantee of sale exclusively to Medfield residents; there is no guarantee preventing a future combination of eligible properties by a developer to create something in a residential area; there is no provision that allows an assisted living development; there is no guarantee, as of today, but there is a future possibility of this happening, of a resale cap price as established by the laws of the Commonwealth. Seniors, longtime residents, or otherwise, should have more choices for downsizing or pragmatic reasons to stay in the town of Medfield. This is an opportunity for a reset or a mindset shift for our aging people as an honor, furthering the already-established endeavors to make Medfield a great place to live and to grow old. America is in the midst of an age boom, and with it, the corresponding, an amazing transition. In general, those over the age of 50 are expected to live longer than any previous generation. This is a welcome challenge for all of our taxpayers, all 4,400 taxpayers, all 7,800 registered voters, to manage and capitalize on this opportunity. The Warrant Committee recommends passage.
Thank you. Do we have a minority report from the Warrant Committee?
We would like to begin by saying that our votes to dismiss Article Five are not votes against senior housing, or what it is trying to be accomplished here in principle. Our vote to dismiss is based on our greater concern about implementing this overlay district when we have unanswered questions. Five and a half weeks ago, the Warrant Committee was told of this special town meeting. Three and a half weeks ago, we were given a copy of the warrant before us and began our review. For an annual town meeting, we would have been given three and a half months, not weeks. Our concerns about this article are really based on not having enough time to give this article a full review as it deserves. Before this town meeting votes to accept this article, we would like more answers about how this overlay district could affect all neighborhoods, where there is a possibility that a developer could combine lots to create a development that conforms to this new zoning bylaw. We also want time to understand the dissenting opinion of the Planning Board. To that end, Mike Sullivan has also expressed concerns that we want to know more about. Tonight, we are here at a special town meeting that did not require a public warrant hearing, a mailing to the homes of residents, nor the longer due process that an annual town meeting provides. We understand that this article, along with Articles Six and Seven, are the ones that were the crux of the town meeting and why the selectmen have called us all here. However, zoning is something that no one in this room should take lightly. There is a reason why it needs a two-thirds vote to move forward. Therefore, we propose that we dismiss this article and revisit at another town meeting after all of our unanswered questions have been answered, and the residents of this town have been given the opportunity for due process they deserve for something so important. Lastly, we would encourage everyone to consider that Article Seven can stand alone without passing of the zoning changes in Articles Five and Six. Article Seven could still allow the selectmen to approve a 40B for senior housing on that property without a greater zoning change at this time.
Thank you. Turn to microphone number two, Planning Board member Sarah Lemke.
Sarah Lemke, 172 Harding Street. I'm the vice chair of the Planning Board. So the Planning Board has a recommendation on Articles Five and Six, but not Seven. Pursuant to the provisions of the Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 40A, Section 5, as amended, the Medfield Planning Board held two public hearings on September 10th and October 1st to consider amending the zoning bylaw as set out in Articles Five and Six. The public hearing was duly posted and advertised in the Medfield Press on August 24th and 31st, 2018. The proposed amendments implement multiple strategies found in the Housing Production Plan adopted by the Planning Board and the Board of Selectmen in October of 2016, specifically utilizing town-owned land, in this case, the Hinckley property, for a senior housing district. However, the bylaw is also applicable outside of the Hinckley parcel, because the town cannot legally identify only one town-owned location for the new zoning district. The Board debated the possibilities of pockets of density around the 2,000-foot radius, as shown in the presentation, which you will hear, but the majority of the Board members agreed that the Board's multiple layers of special permit performance standards, which are copied for you on the backside of the handout that was available outside, will ensure that any new development proposed under this bylaw will meet the strict size and design criteria meant to maintain long-term affordability for seniors while minimizing the impact on surrounding neighborhood properties. The Board notes that this type of proposal is long overdue for our seniors, and if it does not pass this evening, the likelihood of seeing another non-40B zoning alternative in the future is low. The Planning Board voted three to one to recommend passage of Articles Five and Six.
Thank you very much. And we've authorized a presentation from Courtney Starling. Thank you. Now, we're gonna coordinate that, so we have, it's from our housing consultant here, who's gonna give us a little bit of a further background information. Do you know Sarah Repose, our town planner, as well? Was there an introduction from Selectman Marcucci? Was there?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay.
Courtney Starling, our consultant from Community Opportunities Group, is going to give the presentation. I will be here next to her for questions afterwards.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Courtney Starling. I'm a planner for Community Opportunities Group, and I work for the town on housing issues. I want to talk a little bit about what has preceded this. We're actually several years of work into this process to get to the point where we could bring zoning forward. The Senior Housing Committee started working on the issue of senior housing in Medfield several years ago. They conducted a study and also two surveys, the most recent of which was completed over the summer. The surveys were used to help determine what the housing needs of seniors in Medfield were, and also what their preferences were, so whether it would be rental or ownership, what people could afford, what kind of housing, what it might look like. We used those surveys to inform the design program that would be authorized under, under this zoning bylaw. We've also, as mentioned, completed the Housing Production Plan, the most recent of which was adopted in 2016. A Housing Production Plan establishes a strategy moving forward to meet the town's, to meet the state's mandate that 10% of the housing units in Medfield be reserved as affordable housing. The Medfield State Master Plan has also been in progress. I understand that it was intended for this town meeting as well, but was, but has been a little delayed. The Medfield State Hospital Master Plan has helped inform some of the design concept for Hinckley that also underlies this zoning. Last year, we asked you folks to approve inclusionary zoning, which helps with the construction of affordable housing in Medfield. During that time, the Affordable Housing Trust was also formed, and the town voted to capitalize that trust with a million-dollar bond. So we're carrying that work forward, and this is the next step along the way. Over the summer, the Hinckley lot was surveyed and subdivided to prepare it for disposition. So that's kind of what's been happening, and it's taken, as I said, several years to get to this point. And this is now the first step, which is unfortunate in some ways. The zoning is the enabling regulation that would allow for the development of the Hinckley lot. I'll talk a little bit more about what else could potentially be built, but we're gonna start with Hinckley. The concept is 1620 moderately-priced senior cottages and duplexes. When we say moderately priced, we're talking about $350,000 to about $450,000. That is above the purchase price of deed-restricted affordable housing, but is nevertheless housing that is being sought by seniors in Medfield. Because most seniors in Medfield do own their homes, they are precluded from purchasing affordable housing because there are asset limitations of $275,000. So if you own a house in Medfield, dollars to donuts, it's worth more than $275,000, and you would not be eligible for affordable housing ownership opportunities. You would, however, potentially be eligible for rental, but that's a separate story and a separate type of project. So again, we're here for the zoning to enable such a development to be built at Hinckley. Following the zoning, should this be successful, the town will then form an RFP committee to develop a request for proposals to seek developers to potentially develop this site. The RFP will identify the project concept, so again, 16 to 20 units, it will identify the target sales prices, and the town will then be in a position to select a developer most responsive. Should the town select a developer, the next step would be disposition, when the town develops a regulatory agreement. Things that would be in this regulatory agreement would be requirements for deed restrictions, one, to restrict these housing units to senior and disabled households, and the other, to cap max sales price on the Hinckley property, so that it is not possible for some, and that can run for 20 years, but that, so if somebody were to purchase one of these units for $400,000, they could not turn around and sell it six months later for $875. So it's important to have that deed restriction. So, it's important to have that deed restriction in there to maintain long-term affordability for market-rate housing. Should a... Should the regulatory agreement be successful, the project would then be designed by the developer and promoted or submitted to the Planning Board for review. Should that be successful, then we can hit construction, which generally takes about 18 to 24 months. So, again, while... Although we are several years into this, we are still at step one with zoning and have several years more to go to see Hinckley happen for our seniors in Medfield. We've been working very hard. There's been a number of people involved in this. We've been at the Council on Aging with some frequency. We've met with the Senior Housing Study Committee, the Planning Board, Board of Selectmen. We've been... We've been at this for a little while, in any event. And the main thing that we are trying to do is promote housing that fits with the universal design accessibility guidelines so that it is visitable, so that it is habitable for people with mobility issues and other disabilities. We are hopeful that we can promote housing that is consistent with the character of Medfield, with your small-town charm, and so that it's not something that will fundamentally change the characteristics of your town. With this bylaw, as previously stated, I cannot actually write zoning just for one lot in town. It's not legal. So, we've put together a somewhat complicated mechanism, and the gist of it is that it's three developable acres. That means that no wetlands or uplands can be counted, has to have 150 feet of frontage on a public way, and access from... or access from a lot municipal use. This is critical because Hinckley is not currently served by a roadway, and we would need a developer to extend the roadway and also install sewer and water to supply the site. So, we need zoning to incentivize that a developer does that. And since this site is adjacent to the senior center, that would be a lot that's in public use. Finally, a lot must be located within 10 or 2,000 feet of a public amenity. That's approximately a quarter mile and considered walkable. A public amenity is designed... It is defined as being a use or service that is customarily accessory to residential development. That might be a grocery store, a pharmacy, medical offices, things of that nature. So, when it comes down to it, we have... The red is the public amenity boundary. The yellow is the applicable zoning districts and lots served by sewer. You'll see several large lots within that. Most of those are either parks, conservation land, or schools. So, there... Although 15 sites currently could take advantage of this, the current use of them is somewhat unlikely to change. The other thing to keep in mind, although there are concerns that a developer could potentially buy several lots to assemble and use this bylaw, that is also true of 40B. And the difference between this bylaw and 40B is that while it will generate affordable housing, it is permitted locally with your own standards and not the state's standards. So, this is actually an alternative to provide affordable housing that is attractive and meets your standards. The project requirements, generally speaking, we are targeting to build out the 16 to 20 cottages, but we are also willing to consider several other types of development. The crux of it, though, is that they need to be small, modestly priced, and, you know, and also to serve people with mobility challenges. Projects proposed under this bylaw must meet the dimensional requirements. It must meet the affordable housing requirements established under inclusionary zoning, which apply to multifamily projects with more than six units. So, although Hinckley is a single-family subdivision that is exempt from inclusionary zoning, if any other project were to take advantage of this bylaw, they would have to provide affordable housing per the state's standard. As mentioned, these projects do require Planning Board approval. There will be significant public process to ensure that any impacts from these projects would be mitigated to neighboring properties and that it would receive appropriate review. Just because somebody applies to the Planning Board does not mean that they get a special permit. The Planning Board has broad discretion to deny any project that is inappropriate, that is too dense. That does not maintain reasonable setbacks from neighboring developments. This bylaw actually requires an additional setback for any lot line that abuts a single-family home, and the Planning Board is expressly authorized within the bylaw to request reductions in density and increases in setbacks. As stated, no senior housing has been built in Medfield since 2000. There are currently 84 units of senior housing in Medfield, in spite of the fact which represents 2% of your overall housing stock, in spite of the fact that 22% of your households contain residents over 65 years of age. And of those who are over 65 years old in Medfield, 54% of them have a disability. This isn't housing that is, you know, serving a pie-in-the-sky issue. It is housing that serves a current issue and a growing issue. This bylaw is a first step. It is a mechanism to develop housing with broad local control. We have been working on this bylaw all year, and before that, quite frankly. Our first public workshop on the issue was in January. We went to the Board of Selectmen to discuss this in February, July, and August. We've been at the Planning Board June, September, and October, and the Council on Aging in May and September to provide workshops on this bylaw. So, tonight, we respectfully ask that you support us, and with that, I will hand it over to whoever gets it next.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Town Administrator Mike Sullivan is going to talk next. Thank you.
As a senior, I guess I'm qualified to speak on this issue. First of all, why are we asked to do this when you see so many 40B projects that have either already been built within the town or that are being proposed for construction? And the reason is because the state has concentrated on low-income family developments which preclude seniors, and they are just beginning to recognize the problem that seniors are being priced out of the housing market by the rapidly escalating housing projects. So, they are just at the beginning phases of trying to deal with this. I am in favor of this concept. What concerns me is the implementation process. As you heard the Majority Warrant Committee report, there are several issues that need to be addressed, and some of these need to be addressed at the state level, to make sure that we get what we intend out of this article. This article, in effect, is asking the town to discount the price of land that it owns or to increase the density in order to provide moderate-income housing for seniors. Now, I believe the intent, and certainly my opinion, is that it is to keep Medfield seniors in Medfield, people who are longtime residents of the town. I asked this question and received no assurances that these housing units could be sold to Medfield residents exclusively. I don't think we should be building and subsidizing, in effect, or discounting the price is a better way of putting it, for residents of Dover, Sherburne, or Milis or Norfolk, or any other town in the area. If we intend to build moderate-income housing to keep residents, Medfield residents in Medfield, then we ought to have some assurance that those units will be sold to Medfield residents. The second issue that was also addressed in the Majority Warrant Committee report is can you control the resale price? Now, you can control the initial price by putting conditions in the sale, the request for proposal that requires the developer to sell the units at a certain price, target price, that will make them affordable. I have been told that there is no assurance that these units on resale can be controlled as to price. So, someone could buy a house, decide in a year or two that they're going to move to Florida, and sell the house at a market price. And if you've seen some of the sales of the market units, for example, the one going up on Hospital Road, they're, what, $700,000, $800,000 for the market units? Why... How can we protect the affordability of these units so one family doesn't benefit from them, and then we lose the affordability of these housing units? I think we have to be very careful that we can get some assurance, and I think this has to be done at the state level, that we can control the resale price as we do with 40B units. The state sets limits on how high the price of the 40B units can go to, but these are not 40B units, so there is no restriction on the resale price. I don't think it's the intent to have a one-time bonanza for people, or one-time discount, and then allow them to collect a bonanza on the resale and lose the affordability of those units. The third thing is I think perhaps we ought to take a look at these units on a project-by-project basis rather than a town-wide basis. And I say that because most of you that have been in town for more than a year will remember seeing the LCB signs up and down 109 last year, when people felt they were losing control of development for a project that was out of scale with the existing neighborhood. I think before we turn this loose to developers to come in with proposals, and you've heard that it's possible to assemble parcels of land, we ought to know exactly what they're proposing and not that they meet the standards that are controlled in this bylaw. You can always find, and I apologize to our selectmen, you can always find lawyers who will come up with a reason that they meet the standards, and you could end up with projects that are not necessarily what was intended by the standards established, and the courts give great leeways to anything that affords housing. The Metropolitan Area Planning Council, by the way, has said that Eastern Massachusetts by 2040 needs 430,000 additional housing units, and that's without Amazon coming with their headquarters. So, I think we need to have assurances that what we're doing, what the intent of this article, is possible to be implemented and not just vote because it feels good to say we're doing something to provide senior housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other further comments from the stage? Comments? Comments before we go to questions? If there are none, anybody have a question that they need clarification on? Microphone number 1.
Chris Potts, 7 Curb Street. Just a very basic question. Why is the ZBA not involved in the special permit review and process?
I think Sarah can answer that in more detail. When we adopted the new special permitting process in... Was it 2017, Mark? It shifted the special permit responsibility from the ZBA to the Planning Board and significantly strengthened the special permit criteria. I think, Mark, you can speak in more detail if you'd like on that, but that was an overall change, that most special permits will now go to the Planning Board instead of the ZBA under the bylaw change. I think it was 2017?
I believe so.
Yeah.
So, frankly, Medfield's situation was somewhat aberrational. Typically, planning boards are special permit granting authorities for projects, multifamily projects, commercial projects. They're based... They're the usual special permit granting authority, and the ZBA deals more typically with individual, either variances for individual houses or smaller-type, site-specific-type things. It has to do with the resources and the expertise and the authority that they can bring to bear. It's... And it's, for instance, the Planning Board deals regularly with subdivisions, and it's very akin to that process.
Okay, thank you. Question at microphone number 2.
Yes, Jim Nail, 97 Hartford Street. It's not entirely clear to me what the relationship is between 40B and this district and the requirement for, you know, 10% affordable housing in town. Simple question. Would these units that count toward our 10% affordable housing requirement, at least initially, and then I have part B?
Okay. So, that's... I'm trying to try to give a kind of brief answer to that question. 40B housing is housing that is developed under a comprehensive permit per the state's regulations under Chapter 40B. Those requirements have income guidelines, and they also have asset restrictions. Plant... Housing developed under 40B is housing that is developed irregardless of local zoning. A developer has the ability to put together a plan similar to what happened at LCP and bring that forward to the town for a comprehensive permit. If the town has not met 10% of their housing being dedicated to deed-restricted affordable housing, which Medfield currently has not, the town has limited recourse to deny such a project, and the... It really rests on the state and the Housing Appeals Committee as to whether or not the project is appropriate. The difference with this zoning is that any project that, again, features more than six units and is a multifamily project does contribute towards the town's housing inventory that is eligible for the state's subsidized housing inventory, which contributes towards your 10%. The Hinckley project at 16 to 20 units, because these are going to be market-rate units, since we are trying to serve the people who live in Medfield, and we can't if they are deed-restricted affordable units, that is why we're pursuing this, because the inclusionary zoning bylaw that was adopted last year exempts single-family subdivisions. And so, while Hinckley would not contribute toward the overall housing inventory, any other housing developed under this bylaw would.
Could I respond?
Please.
I think the simple answer to that question is the units would not count towards your 10% 40B requirement, but the units would count towards the total housing stock, which means they would add to your total housing stock and increase the number of 40B units that you're required to build.
Thank you. Microphone number 1.
Bill Masaro, 36 Evergreen Way. I just... I'm trying to understand the relationship between this article and the plans for the Hinckley property, which is the next warrant article. What happens to the plans, which I think everybody would think is a good idea in terms of getting affordable, let me put it, lower-cost housing for seniors on the Hinckley property? What happens to that if this article doesn't pass?
It's unlikely that the proposal to build moderately-priced units would move forward. The only way to develop it at that rate would be a 40B project, which would produce four affordable units that would be deed-restricted. Again, it's unlikely that most Medfield seniors would be able to be considered eligible for these units because of the asset limitations for affordable housing. The other issue is that if affordable housing is provided on this site, the 16... If it is 20 units, the 16 remaining market-rate units would have to subsidize the affordable units, which would drive up the market price, given that the median income for senior households in Medfield is $48,000, and the median sales price for anything constructed after 2010 is over $1 million. Without adjusting the math a little bit, it's unlikely that any such housing would be developed at the market-rate price. With this situation, although the town actually cannot give this property away for a reduced price because there is no affordable housing, so it will be sold at full fair-market value, without some zoning to assist this, particularly with respect to density, this project is not viable.
Thank you.
Microphone number 1. Final question.
Doug Curl, 24 Arnold Drive. So, when I was a youngster, my Uncle Tim told me, "You always have to follow the money." And I think what he meant by that is it's important to understand the money trail when there's any sort of, you know... There's always a money trail in many issues, and I'm just wondering if anybody here can shed light for me on, is there a money trail here that maybe you can explain a little bit about? Where would the profitability be on this project? Who stands to gain from it other than, you know, the benefit to potential seniors that would benefit? Is there sort of a, you know, a profitability piece to the equation that I'm not aware of, and that maybe somebody could explain to me?
Well, I mean, the land would be sold... There'd be a public RFP process for the Hinckley property you're talking about specifically, right?
Yes.
Yeah. The land would be sold into a public... Out of a public RFP process, and so the town would get the money for the land, whomever bought it. And then the developer, having bought the land from the town, would then build houses on the land, and would sell those houses to seniors. And the developer, having purchased the land from the town, would get whatever profit there was between the difference in what he paid to the town and the cost to build the houses and the price at which he or she sold the houses to the purchasers.
Is anybody aware of any developers that already sort of are front- Is anybody aware of any developers that already sort of are front-runners on that? Is there a list or anything, any progress whatsoever there?
No, I mean, right now, there's, there's nothing there. And so until there's a town meeting vote for it, there's really nothing you can do with it. So there would be an RFP process where you issue a public RFP, developers would respond, it would generally go to the developer who most closely met the RFP criteria, and then it would be issued through that process. And so I'm not aware of any. This project at Hinckley was developed originally under the auspices of the Medfield State Hospital Master Planning Committee, when they were asked, in addition to developing the plan for the Medfield State Hospital, they were also asked at one point to develop plans for Lot 3 and the Hinckley property, which are the current vacant lands on Ice House Road between the Council on Aging and the Kingsbury Club. So the origins of this use of the Hinckley property came from, from the MSH MPC, and with the bigger part of the plan still TBD, this is sort of the rump piece of it that's coming forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, comments? Microphone number two.
Peter Robbins, Cross Street. Do we have any examples in other communities that have tried this type of approach, and what the success ratio is, or what the experience has been?
On the back of the handout, I have listed a number of neighboring communities that have similar bylaws on that. The success rate of each individual town somewhat depends on the assets of that town and in terms of land and what's available, how built hard they are, what they're, what the market is. And so I can say that there are a number of places that have built successful developments. You have several neighbors that have built developments that I will say that your seniors have brought to me and said, "We like this." Number of them do not actually hit the right price points, though, for seniors in Medfield. There's a mixed bag. We have a number of towns, particularly in Northwest region, that are banding together to provide housing, not just to the affordable housing crowd that meets the state guidelines, but also to address community housing issues like this, where we have seniors who are not low enough income necessarily to qualify for assisted housing, but also are not necessarily in the same position to, at that point in their lives, to be competing with first-time homebuyers and families who have median incomes that are at least $100,000 higher.
So just to get the explanation correct here, if these other communities sold housing to seniors and they didn't experience the issue where the seniors bought the house at a certain price point, and then six months later, a year later, sold it at a big profit?
The model is to, when it's not affordable housing that meets the state's definition, the model is to require deed restrictions as part of the regulatory agreement between the town and the developer. That would mandate that there would be a deed restriction capping sales price if the unit would be resold. I would anticipate that the town of Medfield would exercise such a right during the development agreement, or during the agreement process, to ensure that these units would not be sold, you know, would not be offered at a low price and then immediately flip for a significantly higher price. I anticipate that the town would actually follow the state's model for affordable housing on how they establish the maximum sales price for resale.
Okay, we'll entertain three more comments. Microphone number one.
Paul Hinckley. I agree with what Mike Sullivan said. When we first sold the land to the town, I would presume if they were gonna give it away, it would be to Medfield residents, but this way you're doing it, no Medfield resident is gonna be able to buy an affordable housing in there because they'll make too much. The other thing is, they're trying to panic you about 40B. Well, 40B cannot build there if the town doesn't sell it to them. Don't forget, the town owns that property. They can hold on to that for another five years if they wish, without giving it, and probably make more money. I think they're trying to sell it just so they got more money to buy something for the hospital. But a builder, keep in mind, a builder is not gonna build a house unless he's getting a good profit on it, and then the person that buys it is gonna pay it. And the senior citizen that you think is gonna go in there at 65 or 70, he's trying to downsize. He's not gonna buy a $450,000 house. And nobody's gonna build one for 350, because there's no profit in it. Builders do it for the money, and it's not gonna build or go to 40B. Just think about it. 40B, the only way they can build is, they gotta buy the property. And if the town of Medfield doesn't sell it to them, they can't build it. So you could hold on to it for 10 years, and it'd stay open land. And then if they, 10 years from now, if you wanted more money, if you, people are still around, then you could sell it and make some money.
Good. Thank you. Okay. Okay, we're gonna have three final comments, then give an opportunity for anybody on the stage to be able to comment, then we'll reread the motion and put it to a vote. Microphone number two.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for your hard work. Carol Reed, 195 South Street. I have a question, and then just a point of clarification. This is, this creating a new overlay district, is it accurate that you're saying that would be applied to the whole town, not just to one, that area, how it's zoned? So this project can't go there because it's not zoned appropriately, so we need an overlay? But the overlay would encompass the whole town. Is that correct?
It, it encompasses multiple zoning districts, but not the whole town. It's identified in the bylaw itself where it's permitted.
And, and how many districts? I'm sorry, I didn't see it there. So it would apply to multiple districts and then anything over three acres?
Right.
It applies within the RS, RT, BI, or IE zones. So it's not the whole town, particularly because the public benefits are, the public, the public amenity radius significantly truncates, and this is only a small cross-section of town where it's applied.
But it seems like a big decision, in my mind, I've been here 26 years, to make that change to zoning, which is, which is significant, before we've even seen, and that's my point of clarification, and had an opportunity to look at the Medfield State Hospital project and where this important senior factor could be added. So that's, it's, it's a big change, in my opinion, without seeing how we're moving forward with the state hospital. So thank you for clarifying.
Thank you. Microphone number one.
Short question. Mary Harney, Maplewood Road. Since you cannot make sure that these homes will go to Medfield residents, how would the choice be made? How would people apply in state, I mean, in the town, out of the town? Would there be a lottery? Would you be a, in the first, what, 16 people who apply are in the lottery, or first 200, first 1,000?
These units would be sold typical to all other units with market rate housing, so they would be available on the open market. I will note that all market rate housing is open to anyone. The reason why we can't restrict it just to Medfield residents is because it violates the Civil Rights Act. And so there's a reason why that's in there. We can do local preference on affordable housing because there's a public benefit, but with market rate housing of any kind, anywhere, you cannot do local preference. And that's why we've done it this way.
Do you think that the state should be looking at a special benefit for the seniors? So that they can do that, just, you know, wouldn't be against?
The state doesn't have the authority to assert federal law.
I guess you're right.
All right. Okay. Final comment.
Margaret Bancroft, 44 Foundry Street. Somebody who served on the planning board for many years in the 80s and 90s, and at a time, and I'm, I'm not in touch so much now, when it was considered that any zoning change, even the smallest zoning change, was a matter that was serious to the long-term development of the town and should only be considered at an annual town meeting. I would very much echo the, the view of the, of the minority of the warrant committee, and I'd be curious to hear the view of the one dissenting member of the planning board on this subject. It seems to me, having only very recently even become aware of this really significant zoning change, which really affects virtually the entire residential area of the town, except for a very small piece which goes right along the eastern side of the town. It's all of the residential areas in town, but for a very small strip of land on the east of town would be subject to this. Taken at its extreme, after my first quick look at this, this basically permits a multifamily building of up to 24 units to be built anywhere in the town where eventually there might be some little amenity that would satisfy, satisfy the requirements. Or, and there just seems to be, there seem to be too many significant unanswered questions, and I think this would be very suitable to take up in next, next year's town meeting, after a lot more sort of full public disclosure of all the consequences of it.
Thank you for your comments. Any more comments from the stage? Comments from the stage? Mr. Wolf.
Let me argue in favor of this, if we may please. Many of you in this room recently participated in a senior housing survey in the spring. Let me give you some preliminary results from that. 2,204 households were surveyed, 3356 individuals. Out of that, 48% of the households that responded indicated a desire, either a high desire or a somewhat likely desire, to have senior housing available. That number was 1,058 senior housing units. The demand for senior housing in Medfield is not big, it is huge. And the immediacy of that demand is also very important to note. 410 of those units were requested within a two-year period. High senior housing demand and immediate demand. We have a choice here. And the choice is that we can provide our seniors with some opportunity to get into housing, or alternatively, we can do nothing and provide nothing for the people who have formed the values of this town. We have, as Courtney mentioned, $48,000 is the average income for our senior housing, for our seniors. We have 23% of the town of Medfield living at incomes of $75,000 or less. I think we have an obligation to our seniors to provide some opportunity. It may not be a perfect one, but some opportunity to get into housing that allows them to stay in the home, a town that they formed.
Thank you. Okay. Read the motion.
Question?
One more question?
One more question? My name is Jim Feeny, I live on Fairview Road. I think this is my 27th or 28th town meeting. The first five, we talked about a pool, if you remember those days, a big town pool. The last 26--
Excuse me?
Real quick, I'll be real quick. The last 25 have been the interest of our seniors, and as I get closer to that definition, I get more concerned about this. Mr. Wolf, you just said we have concern about senior housing. I took that survey. The concern was senior housing for the current Medfield folks, so they wouldn't move to Norfolk, Cape Cod, or Florida. My understanding of this situation is that we put up those 20 units, and the young woman who gave a very nice presentation, there's no chance in hell that anybody who's a senior citizen in Medfield is gonna move into one of those units. So basically, we're gonna put up 20 units, folks from other towns are gonna move into Medfield, which I have no objection to, but my objection is that there's 20 families in Medfield who would like to stay in the town, continue to provide benefits to the town, that are locked out. So bottom line, net-net, 0-0, we're not helping the seniors move and stay in Medfield at all. Am I correct, or am I wrong?
I believe you're wrong, sir, because they have, and Medfield residents would have an equal chance with everyone else to participate in that housing.
But that's not what the young lady--
Okay, that's good. Thank you. Good question.
She said dollars a donut, it's no chance.
Sarah.
Sarah Lemke, just wanted to make one point of clarification regarding what Courtney said. Just want to make sure people understand that the development, if it were to go forward, would not prohibit Medfield seniors from applying, as we said. And her point was that they are unlikely to get an affordable unit that has a local preference, because you would likely be over the income limits. So the reality is, this is the best opportunity that we have for Medfield seniors to try to get housing. I also wanted to say that, you know, if you look at the guidelines that are printed in the handout, the planning board has very strict criteria that we have to go through before anything could be approved. We spend a lot of time, multiple hearings, the public is welcome to attend, give their feedback, provide comments, before anything will be able to go forward, and we take that job very seriously, so.
Thank you. Thank you for all the planning board does for us. Okay, we're gonna re, reread the motion.
Article 5. Move that the town amend the Medfield Town Code, Article 300, zoning by adding a new section to 300-14.17, senior housing residential development overlay district as set out in the warrant.
Thank you. This requires a two-thirds vote for passage. I'm gonna ask all in favor, please to say aye. Opposed? Okay, show of hands, all in favor? Opposed? I'm gonna deem it fails to carry by the required two-thirds vote. Article number six. Article number six is an article to amend the Town Code, Chapter 300, Table of Use Regulations for the Senior Housing Residential Development Overlay District. Again, offered by the planning board, the Senior Housing Committee, and the Board of Selectmen. And again, I'm gonna ask for a positive motion from the warrant committee. This is the moderator? Please. Point of order.
This motion cannot, this article cannot pass without the prior article, it was dependent upon it, so it ought to be dismissed.
Okay. So do we hear a motion to dismiss?
Article six. Move that Article six be dismissed.
All in favor? Opposed? Okay, that gets us to Article seven, which I believe can be considered. Also requires a two-thirds vote. Also, a, this is to authorize the Board of Selectmen to dispose of by sale/lease a parcel of land containing 8.4 acres to a private developer to construct affordable, moderately-priced residential housing for seniors. Again, requires a two-thirds vote. And Jack Wolf, you have a positive motion?
We do. To see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to dispose of by sale or ground lease a parcel of town-owned land, shown as Parcel A on a plan of land, captured approval, not required, A and R survey, Medfield Senior Center, Medfield, Mass., prepared by DePree Engineering, 990 Washington Street, Suite 101A, Dedham, Mass. 02026, dated June 26, 2018, and recorded at Norfolk County Registry of Deeds in Plan Book 672 at page 75. Containing 5.48 acres according to said plan, together with access and utility easements over, under, and through a budding town-owned land known as Lot 3, Ice House Road, to a private developer pursuant to the provisions of General Laws, Chapter 30B, Section 16, on such terms and conditions as the Board of Selectmen determine to be in town's interest. To develop and construct affordable and/or moderately-priced residential housing for seniors. And if deemed necessary or desirable, to authorize the Board of Selectmen to petition the General Court of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to enact special legislation to enable said development and/or construction, or do or act anything in relation thereto.
Do you have a report?
We do. As you now know, we have a great need for senior housing here in this town. This particular article authorizes the disposition as commonly, as what is commonly known as the Hinckley property, for such senior housing. As Tom Marie noted, this is clearly the right thing to do in support of deserving seniors. And we thank our Board of Selectmen for initiating this, and we thank the planning board for their support in this. Know that the demand, as noted earlier, for senior housing is very high. Per our recent senior housing survey, just those who are highly likely and somewhat likely to move into senior housing, total senior housing demand, 1,058 units. The immediacy of that demand is also urgent. 410 units are wanted in the next two years alone. The Hinckley property is just a small start, 16 to 20 units. But our seniors would at least have a chance of getting-- least have a chance of getting some housing here in town to begin the process of providing for those who so deserve an opportunity to stay in the town that they formed. Our seniors deserve this, and I think they deserve even more. The Warrant Committee recommends passage.
Okay, thank you. Comments from the stage? Mr. Markucci.
Just to clarify, in light of the vote on Articles 5 and 6, under the current zoning, the only way this property could be developed for senior housing would be as a 40B comprehensive permit project, and so if you did the 20 houses that were laid out, five of them would have to be affordable and meet the state affordability standards, and 15 would be market rate. And so if you're in favor of moving forward with some sort of senior development on the Hinckley property, under current zoning, it would have to be a 40B project unless, in the spring annual town meeting or future annual town meeting, some other zoning rule was adopted, like the overlay district or something else, to facilitate something else. So that it did not depend, we can't do it exactly the way Courtney had described earlier, it could be done as a 40B project on the same kind of layout.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? Microphone one.
Roberta Lynch, Council on Aging. I just have a question on this Article 7. Back about a month ago, the Council on Aging Board voted to declare a wedge of land, of our land as surplus and give it to the Hinckley property, so I'm just wondering if that 5.4 acres includes that land?
Yes.
It does. Okay. So, so the Council on Aging has always been a strong advocate of moderately-priced, appropriate housing for seniors, and it's been something that we've talked about for many years. I was a member of the Senior Housing Study Committee. Senior housing, the lack of senior housing in Medfield is a huge problem. I've seen many of, in my 17 years, people leave Medfield because there is no place for them to go. And I know people think that, you know, Medfield won't be able to move into the housing or whatever, they'll be, but it really is a, it's a critical issue and it needs to be addressed. So I'm speaking for myself, and I hope for my board, many of them are here, that we need to move forward in some sort of senior housing project so that, and I know there are 40Bs popping up all over the place. And the other good thing about the Hinckley property is that it's very close to the senior center, so the services programs are in place, and so I want to say for me personally, as a COA Director, that Article 7, I support Article 7.
Okay, thank you. We're going to make a motion here. We're going to move here that Article 7 be approved as set out in the warrant. Requires a 2/3s vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay. Let's do a show of hands there. All in favor of this motion? And opposed? One more time, if you would, please. Okay, all in favor, raise your hand high. Doesn't look like it carries, but it's close. Does anybody want to come forward and ask for a standing count? Otherwise, I'm going to deem it fails to carry. I don't think it required 2/3s. I just need seven people to stand and say they want to put this to a standing count. One? Okay. Mr. Bledsoe, we're going to have a standing count.
Can we get all the counters to come out here?
Counter, if you'd come forward. If you're in favor of this motion. Okay. All in favor, please stand. Okay. Please be seated. We all set for the noes to be seated? Camera people didn't get counted? Okay. If you want to check in with the deputy moderator and give your votes, you're all 333, figure out what, 182 divided by-- Votes were 182 in favor, 151 opposed. It fails to carry by the required 2/3s vote. Next article. Everybody clear on that? We did not have a 2/3s majority on that. It was 182 to 151. The next article we're going to consider tonight is Article 10. Article 10 is an article to appropriate funds to open the center on Saturdays through June of 2019 and pay for staffing, operating expenses, program, meals, utilities, and associated costs. We do not have a positive motion on this from the Warrant Committee, so I would ask if we have a positive motion on this from our sponsor or from the Board of Selectmen. Do we have a positive motion?
Happy to make the motion. Move that the town appropriate the sum of $9,500, said sum to be raised on the FY19 tax levy for the purpose of funding the opening of the center at Medfield on Saturdays through June 30, 2019, including staffing, operating expenses, programming, meals, utilities, and other associated costs.
Thank you. We have a majority report from Mr. Pastore on the Warrant Committee.
Thank you. The Saturday program at the Council on Aging is a great initiative, and a dismissal vote here tonight does not have to be the end of it. There are two separate accounts at the disposal of the Council on Aging that have more than enough funds to cover the cost of the program through the remainder of this fiscal year. This program is the result of the hard work of the Council on Aging staff in applying for and earning a private grant. However, the council was well aware that the grant money would expire before the end of the fiscal year. The proper procedure would have been to seek the supplemental funds during last year's budget process. Simply, the town should not be on the financial hook when this situation could have been avoided, in where the requesting department has a surplus of funds to cover the expense. Precedent matters here, and while we're talking about a relatively small sum for, again, a very admirable and important program, we're concerned about starting a trend of departments reopening their budgets in the fall after annual town meeting has already voted. The Warrant Committee is committed to review this budget request when it comes up again during the normal course of the 2020 budget process, but a majority of the committee cannot recommend the article at this time.
Do we have a minority report?
We do. As many of you know, the Council on Aging, housed in our center, does a great job of serving our senior population. The council provides a wide range of activities, over 25 classes per week, regular meals, health and financial advice, transportation, respite care, and most importantly, the social contact, warmth, and friendship that we all need. And they do this at one of the world's greatest bargains, just under $250,000 a year, 4 tenths of 1% of our town's budget for 28% of the town's population. In contrast, our schools, which serve a similarly sized population, require 70% of the town's budget, more than $40 million annually. We have 3,300 residents over age 55 in town, some substantial portion of which use our center. The center sees over 28,000 individual visits each year, and 3,000 of those occur on Saturdays. This year, our outstanding director, Roberta Lynch, applied for and received a grant for Saturday opening, which began in spring of 2018. By the way, note that that was applied for and received at the point in time that budgets were already set and close to being voted on. It's been a huge success, over 50 attendees on any given Saturday. That grant runs out in December of 2018, and the purpose of this article, Article 10, is to ask for $9,500 from the town to extend these Saturday services through June 30, 2019. The Warrant Committee had a strongly divided vote on this. Five against, four for it. And we believe it is the right thing to do for our seniors. So we, in this minority report, urge you to support $9,500 of funding for Saturday activities for our seniors. It is simply the right thing for us as a town to do in support of a tremendous portion of our population.
Any further comments or discussion from the stage? Anybody want to step to a microphone? Questions? Microphone number one.
Roberta Lynch, Council on Aging Director. Mr. Pastore talks of two accounts. Most departments have accounts, and they have money in their accounts, and we do. We have a Jenks account that has $56,000 in it. Mr. Jenks was a wonderful, longtime Medfield resident. He had a wife, Dorothy, who lived with Alzheimer's and died with Alzheimer's. That money has been, was willed to us, $46,000 from Mr. Jenks, $10,000 from Marion Phillips. That money was willed to us, and at my, it was given my discretion, and I have put that money aside in honor of Dorothy Jenks that will be used when and if we are able to put an addition on for the center to accommodate all our programs and classrooms, but our very wonderful respite program we have with people with early dementia. The other account we have is our gift account. That's a revolving account. Money goes in, money goes out. I pay my instructors, I pay our speakers, I pay anything that needs to be done, support programs and initiatives that the Council on Aging does. I am asking for $9,500 from the town. I'm asking the town to help support the Council on Aging, to help that Saturday program continue till the end of June 30. A comment was made, why didn't I have that on the April town meeting? Well, if you remember, it was a two-night town meeting, and we were there two nights. My, our article came up at quarter of 11 the second night. Our focus was on an addition. We are busting out of that building. We have to reschedule and move people into the lobby for their, for their meetings and their one-on-one consultation. So no, the Saturday program started March 3. We're talking about an April town meeting. It wasn't on my radar that this program was going to be so successful, so I didn't have it on the April town meeting. I had the thought of starting an addition for much-needed space. So I asked the town to support, the Council on Aging, support the Saturday program that has been very helpful for people who experience, who have experienced changes as they age, losses, family circles, and Saturday has been well-received. They, it runs from 10 to 3. Anybody's welcome to come in. Anyone can come in and see what they're doing on Saturdays, never mind Saturdays, Monday through Friday would be very helpful, too. So please, I ask for your support for $9,500 to run the program through the end of June. Thank you.
Quick comment, one more comment. I think we're there on this.
Paul Hinckley.
Thank you.
For the people that don't know, we probably have one of the best senior centers in the whole area, and it's run by Roberta Lynch, and I'd say 60% of her, 70% of her people there are all volunteers. This is the perfect chance for $9,500, which is probably going to cost everybody a penny on their taxes, when they threw away all that other money for all these other projects. This is your one chance to really do something for the seniors, and I would leave it on her budget.
Okay. Okay, we're going to put this to a motion. We do have a motion to appropriate the sum of money from the tax levy as offered by Selectmen Murby. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I deem that it carries. We have two more articles left. Article number four and article number 11. Next article we're going to take is article number 11. Everybody's going to stay till the end, no matter what, right? So, yeah, well, then we pulled Article 11. Article 11. Transfer of sum of money from the balance of the Iron Magnes Annual Town Meeting in 2018 was an Article 34 for the purpose of, from that, for the purpose of studying and/or implementing the reduction of unaccounted-for water in the town water supply. And we have a positive motion from the Warrant Committee. Newton Thompson.
Move that the town appropriate the sum of $50,000, said sum to be transferred from the unexpended balance of funds appropriated for Iron-- the unexpended balance of funds appropriated for iron manganese removal from the water supply under Article 34 of the 2018 annual town meeting for the purpose of studying and/or implementing the reduction of unaccounted-for water in the town's water supply.
Okay, and do we have a report?
Yes.
Please.
At annual town meeting in April 2018, the town voted to appropriate $660,000 from the Water Enterprise Fund surplus that, along with $140,000 from the prior year's appropriation surplus, will be used to design a water treatment facility to remove iron and manganese deposits from the water supply at wells number three and number four, and to prepare construction plans and specifications to put out to bid. Before proceeding with the treatment facility design, however, the Water and Sewage Board has reprioritized its water projects and seeks town approval to reappropriate $50,000 of those funds. The purpose of this request is to hire a consultant to investigate water main leaks and develop a plan to replace all water meters. Both initiatives are being taken to address unaccounted-for water due to pipeline leaks or inaccurate meter readings. Any capital investment recommendations to repair leaking water mains or replace water meters would be presented for town approval in FY 2020. Reducing water losses due to leaks and faulty meter readings will help the town meet both the growing unaccounted-for, both the unaccounted-for water performance standard under its water permit, as well as its growing water needs due to 40B projects, Medfield State Hospital development, and organic growth. The warrant committee recommends passage.
Great, thank you. Comments from the stage? Any questions about this article? If there are none, we will put this transfer to a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. Okay. And I do suggest that we pay careful and increased attention to issues associated with our water supply going forward. These are going to be issues that we're going to be dealing with for many years into the future, so. Article four. Article four is the article to authorize the Board of Selectmen to lease a portion of the former Medfield State Hospital, including the Lee Chapel and the infirmary with surrounding land for up to 99 years for purpose of developing and operating an arts and cultural center. The Cultural Alliance of Medfield and the Board of Selectmen were the sponsors of this article. It does require a two-thirds vote. We do not have a positive motion from the warrant committee, so I would ask for a positive motion from the Board of Selectmen or from the floor.
We move that Article four be passed and set out in the warrant.
Okay, so that's our positive motion. Our first presentation is going to come from Joanna Hilvert of the warrant committee.
While he's setting this up, I'd like to explain, if you've been to other town meetings, you'll know that the warrant committee doesn't typically do a PowerPoint presentation. However, this article is not straightforward, neither is our recommendation on this article, and there have been some questions of clarification that were raised, and so I thought this would be helpful to have a PowerPoint to go along with the warrant report. I will preface this by saying that I'm an attorney, and PowerPoints definitely stretch my abilities, so I can promise you this will be not nearly as exciting as any of the other PowerPoints you'll see tonight, but. Okay, so, and I am going to read the warrant report because this is what represents the recommendation of the warrant committee, a unanimous recommendation, by the way, which is to dismiss the article. The Medfield State Hospital Planning Committee produced a strategic reuse master plan for the Medfield State Hospital land this past spring. As part of the master plan, the Lee Chapel and Infirmary, which are centrally located on the property, you can see there the purple buildings, have been earmarked for a cultural arts center. The surrounding land was earmarked for mixed commercial and residential use, including about 300 housing units. It should be noted that the master plan is not yet a final binding plan for the development of the state hospital property. As described by Kathy McCabe, the consultant hired by the town to draft the plan, the plan should be viewed as aspirational in nature, and ultimately, the development of the site will depend on a variety of factors, including viability for developers and resolving certain logistical challenges for the town. Central to these factors will be the substantial cost of updating infrastructure to the site, including water, sewer, and electrical, which is estimated at approximately $20 to $30 Currently, the master plan is being reviewed by potential developers through the issuance by the Board of Selectmen of a request for information, a so-called RFI. The RFI process will hopefully provide some feedback on whether the master plan is viable to developers and/or whether changes to the plan need to be made. For example, given the high infrastructure costs, will the plan produce enough profit margin for a developer? If not, developers are unlikely to build out the plan. The RFIs are due back in November, and the Board of Selectmen expect to have reviewed them by December, January. Once the feedback from the RFI process has been received and any necessary changes made to the master plan, the Board of Selectmen expects that the town will vote on the implementation of the master plan at a town meeting this spring through a zoning bylaw. Tonight, the town is being asked to authorize moving forward with a major piece of the master plan, the cultural arts center, before the RFIs have been returned, before the infrastructure issues have been resolved, and before the town has had an opportunity to vote on the master plan as a whole. The Board of Selectmen has indicated that they will take the RFI information into consideration when they ultimately make a decision on whether or not to lease these properties, as this vote would authorize them to enter into a lease but not direct them to do so. The warrant committee commends the Cultural Alliance of Medfield, and specifically Jean Minio, for the incredible work invested thus far on the proposed cultural arts center. The warrant committee's recommendation is not a referendum on the merits of the proposal. However, the warrant committee has identified several concerns with proceeding with the cultural arts center ahead of the remainder of the master plan. There are several pieces of incomplete information, which we hope to receive from the results of the RFI process. The first is, is the master plan viable? If not, we'll have to go to a Plan B. The master plan may be revised, it may be scrapped altogether, we just don't know, and some of that will depend on what the developers say. We don't know at this point if the Plan B reuse of the site is something that will be compatible with the arts center. Number two, we also don't know whether potential developers will see the arts center as an attraction or a deterrent. This is in the center portion of the campus, and therefore, it's possible that it will act as an anchor and draw developers who would like to create a housing development around the center. However, it is also possible that they will be deterred by this use, developers, they won't want to build around a cultural arts center. We simply don't know at this point, although we could have more information once the RFI process is complete. And finally, as you just heard regarding Article 11, it's not a shortage of water, but it's a shortage on our water use permit, our water withdrawal permit. We don't know at this point whether our water permit will allow us to sustain the type of housing that is talked about in the master plan, which also puts the plan into question. Because of those reasons, we feel that the timing is premature. You may ask, what does it matter? Because the Board of Selectmen has said they will take this information into consideration before they make a decision on whether to enter into a lease. However, the town of Medfield has always made decisions after a thorough review by the warrant committee and evaluation of that review by the taxpayers at town meeting. Given the fact that the potential risks with moving forward with the cultural arts center in advance of the rest of the project could potentially put the entire hospital development at risk, why not wait until we at least have the results of the RFI? We believe that in this case, both the warrant committee and the taxpayers are being asked to forego review of some pieces of significant information with the assumption that the Board of Selectmen will conduct that review at a later date. Finally, there are the infrastructure questions that I alluded to before. Because of the high cost of infrastructure, CAM has come up with a low-cost, short-term solution where they believe they can get infrastructure to the site for, I think their estimate is it'll cost under $100,000, and they've said they will cover up to $100,000. However, this plan has not been officially reviewed or endorsed by the DPW, and just in conversations that I've had while doing my due diligence for this article with members of the Board of Water and Sewerage, I believe the cost could be higher than $100,000, possibly up to $150,000. Would the town be asked to carry the overage of that cost? We just don't know, and any potential costs to the town should be firmly understood and vetted by the warrant committee and the taxpayers prior to coming to town meeting. So finally, I think most of us here, I see a lot of yellow stickers, I think most of us can agree that the cultural arts center in a vacuum is a great idea. When you see the presentation after mine from CAM, which I promise you will be much more interesting and colorful than mine, I'm sure you will feel as I do that it is a beautiful concept and could be a great attribute to Medfield. However, the cultural arts center cannot be viewed in a vacuum. It was conceived as part of the master plan, the master development plan for the hospital site as a whole, and must be viewed in the context of that master plan. This is why the warrant committee believes it is premature to move forward on the cultural arts center before we have received feedback on the master plan as a whole. Our recommendation to dismiss is not the typical recommendation to dismiss, it's just not right now. The timing is not right now. We believe we'll have more information by the spring town meeting, and we would reevaluate it again at that time. Thank you.
Okay, we've authorized another presentation. Where's Jean?
Mr. Moderator, thank you, everybody else for hanging in there tonight. Jean Minio, representing the Cultural Alliance of Medfield, that is a nonprofit that was established in 2015. I was also a member of the Resource Committee to the Master Planning Committee since 2014, until they delivered the plan earlier this year. You might be familiar with some of our other work in town. I just want to give a plug for the Holiday Stroll and Memo's Tree Lighting on December 7th coming up. I wouldn't be doing my job without that. We also were part of this national study, but it studied Medfield specifically. It was released in 2017, and this matters because there's been some questions about whether or not a different developer potentially generating revenue on the buildings, but cultural activities also provide economic benefits, and the reality is that this property hasn't generated revenue for the town in 123 years, other than through some special events. What we do have in front of us is a proposal to move forward with an arts center. So this is the master plan you just saw from Joanna. The circle in the middle does highlight the two buildings we're talking about, out of the 35 that still exist on the property. The Master Planning Committee considered the arts center within the entire plan as desirable for the early phase of development, in part because public programs will activate the campus. This will help attract developers, help with absorption of the housing units to come potentially, and perhaps increase the assessed value of the surrounding property. The financials on those two buildings are challenging. The consultant calculated a $5.3 million gap for developers, up to $4.5 million of that is on the chapel alone. And apart, what's challenging about that is the volume of space within the chapel. There's only one floor that could be used to generate revenue, rather than the two or three floors that exist in other buildings. There's been public input over nearly four years. It's been quite extensive on this plan. Many of you probably commented on the three surveys, or attended the public meetings and workshops, or read the weekly newsletters, saw the 10 different Medfield TV shows. In February of 2017, 400 of you vetted four concepts, and we've done two separate studies also on these two buildings. They were released a year and a half ago. They've been available on our website since. So we've aligned our research with the master planning process. We'd hope to advance them together. Joanna did mention that we found an alternative to the infrastructure with a written estimate for the sewer connection that is under $70,000. If it is more, we agree with Selectmen Murby that this is certainly a manageable negotiation in the big picture. So with ongoing public support, with a viable option on the infrastructure, we're hoping to still advance this piece of the property. However, that RFI was issued earlier. It's due back November 16. As you heard, the Selectmen's analysis, they've said, would be December 18. So the RFI will provide input on the arts center, so that concerns about starting the development with these two buildings as an early phase would be minimized, and so we could begin the next step and the further the conversations as early as January. The article does not preclude further vetting, but it does provide flexibility to be able to move forward on an important early phase of the hospital property. This is the proposal for the arts center, to connect the two buildings with a contemporary addition for performing arts and education. That would be classrooms on the right, the performing arts on the left, for all ages and for group activities. So we know that Medfield has no shortage of top-notch teachers, but we have a major shortage of space in town. Our plan is to raise the funds to renovate and operate the facility through private donations. We've heard the doubters, and we've read your Facebook posts. Unfortunately for us, this is the typical model for the arts, but to be able to raise those funds and to build and operate and to use the historic tax credits, we need this long-term lease of a dollar a year. So our goal on this is a $12.5 million project. We project that's the cost in five years, which is what we think it will take to raise those funds. That's the duration of the campaign. We know that this is a big regional undertaking, and we're very eager to get started. There is some urgency to this, and that is the donors want site control, meaning a lease, before committing significant gifts. The other urgency is that there's cost escalations that are inherent in construction projects over time. Those are anticipated to cost $400,000 to $500,000 a year if costs were to escalate at about 4% a year. Those cost escalations aren't going to enhance the property any further. In addition, the capital campaign will take time to ramp up on staffing and planning, and so continuing to just postpone until April or longer also has consequences. Supporting the arts article now, Article four, is just a small step to continue a piece of the plan as early as January, where as soon as the Selectmen are comfortable. This is the interior of the chapel space, which we would envision as a 300-seat flexible space. Could imagine concerts and lectures, films, and more with opportunities for our community groups and events. We've heard the question asked, if these empty buildings around this, if this were an early phase of development, if that would be a problem for the arts center, but we believe that it could function with public programs, even though there would be empty buildings around it. You'd know that because if you walk up there, you see dog walkers and bicyclists and annual events like the car show. We now have a cyclocross planned in early December. We do agree, however, that residential programs or residential buildings are more problematic when there's other empty buildings around it, so it's another reason why bringing activity to the site as an early phase through the arts center would be helpful. I would also say that the arts center is not dependent on the rest of the master plan, whether it is the 300 units that are proposed in the master plan around it, or whether a developer requests more, or whether the master plan never happens and that number is zero. While those details may take time to resolve, the arts center project can begin. So supporting this article is also telling the Selectmen that maintaining public access to the site is important. This is a view of the first floor plan with, again, the performance space on the left and classrooms on the right. That infirmary building on the right does have three floors that are usable for spaces, approximately 17 different classrooms with nine for private music lessons. What is unique and special about this opportunity is the adjacency of these two buildings, so to be able to have the education and the performance space together. There's also three trends in our community that we're watching that have relevance to the arts and this building of this arts center. First is that our high school students are reporting stress levels higher than Metro West in general. That's a trend that's continuing to rise, and they're reporting alcohol use and binge drinking rates that are higher than the region, the state, and the nation. But the good news here is that our students themselves report music as a powerful and proven method to reduce stress, to promote their well-being, to take a break from the pressure, and to make pressure, and to make friends. Second, we've heard about already tonight a little bit, is that we're making significant strides in reaching 40B and the low-income housing requirements. This will be increasing our economic diversity, we know the arts are an effective way to bridge divides, open dialogues, and create understanding across all demographics. And third, we also heard a little bit about is our senior population in Metro West that's growing. Medfield's numbers for residents over the age of 65 increased 20% between 2000 and 2010, even though the overall population declined by 3%. Here too, the arts have a role to play. The studies have proven that folks engaged in the arts regularly experience shorter hospital stays, better pain management, and less medication. So a vote in favor of Article 4 just creates conditions to move a portion of the master plan forward for the benefit of the community. So here we are, we're going to have developer feedback on the master plan in less than three weeks. We're going to continue to work with the Warrant Committee and the Selectmen, the new Development Committee on their questions. Now it's your turn, armed with a very detailed 210-page master plan, extensive public input, two studies on the art center alone, additional feedback from developers coming very soon, inevitable further vetting in an imperfect world. We hope that you'll support this article and send a message to the Selectmen that continued public use at the hospital and the art center matters, and to set the conditions to be able to move forward with a conversation as soon as the Selectmen are ready. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move quickly. First comments from the stage, further comments from the stage? Mr. Murby?
This'll be quick, just a couple points. The first one, for those who are here when we bought the state hospital property, I'd ask you to think back to how you were thinking about that purchase at the time. It was positioned as buying the property so we could control our destiny, and I think that meant a little more than merely a real estate transaction. Whatever it means to you, just get tuned into that. I would make one observation on Jean's work over the last, I guess, two years. I started off skeptical, because I assume anything like this, this not-for-profit is probably a hole for throwing money into. As far as I'm concerned, she's done the soundest planning in putting this concept together of anything we've done for any part of the state hospital property, so... There's three things that I think you might want to think about, and these are not purely transactional. And incidentally, I don't criticize the Warrant Committee for wanting all the financial data, it's their responsibility to get. I am concerned about the delays that waiting for perfect information introduces into the process. We're coming up on four years of owning this property, and so far, it's been a movie set for a couple movies, and a routine dog-walking park, and not a whole lot more, but we have cyclocross coming in December. One of the points I'd make is Medfield's history. This part of the town was a place where artists would come, maybe it wasn't quite the Hudson Valley School, but people would come to Medfield because of the river, the views, the vistas. Not that I want to resurrect that, but this idea that we would do something with the state hospital that reconnects Medfield with its past history has merit. The second is, the whole reason this came up the way it did is because the consultant that we hired to help us about a year ago basically said, "I think an arts and culture center like this, as a lead development, will enhance the value of the entire property." So the whole reason we're looking at this sequencing is because the Arts and Culture Center arguably has a benefit to the town from an economic standpoint in terms of the perceived value of the rest of the property. There is a counter-opinion that says no, Jean's already covered it, and that's why the RFI has gone out to get feedback from developers, so we can determine that one way or the other. The last point I'd make, that I'm surprised Jean didn't mention, is that this project that Jean's talking about is covering the remediation of the chapel in the infirmary. When we bought the property, we had projected that the cost of remediation or demolition of the property would be 12 to 15 million dollars. That estimate has crept up to $25 million. This project will at least cover one and a half million of that. So for those who really want the finances, I wouldn't worry about the incremental cost of the infrastructure as long as it's in that $100,000 to $200,000 range, I'd be thinking about that one and a half million dollars. Not telling you how to vote, I do think you should consider those aspects when you decide what to do.
Okay. Anybody else have a compelling need to address the town meeting? Okay, John, microphone number one.
John Hahney, 17 Maplewood Road, and I've addressed the town meetings in the past on this. Been totally interested for my whole 53 years in town, but since I was a Selectman back in the 90s, quite a while ago at this point, the hospital has been looming large as a major concern, a fundamental concern for Medfield and for the future of Medfield. No one would be more reluctant than I to take the floor against something that Jean Minio and her very hard-working, zealous, highly constructive, wonderful people have done and want to do for Medfield. But really consider what the Warrant Committee has said, that was wonderfully laid out, logically. This is very ill-timed. It could wait for town meeting in April, and it should. There are so many questions, the whole plan is in the subjunctive, it's in the optative mood, okay? If you remember high school, I once, as a young, very young man, taught high school and taught Latin and Greek, so futurbo and so forth, optative moods, were part of my lore in those days. But this is so important for Medfield, and what you're being asked to do is to cede your control, town meeting control. You're making an act of faith in the Selectmen's judgment. I was a Selectman. I know we made mistakes, I made mistakes, they make mistakes. We should be reliant upon town meeting, the Warrant Committee studies this. Very few people went to the warrant hearing on this. But again, it was laid out there, no one is against saving the chapel, cultural center, the other building is a question mark. We know that it takes two to three times the money to reconstruct the building than it does to have new construction. We don't have costs on anything, we don't really have a plan, the plan has not been accepted, that we spent hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars, and five consultants, I think, well, two different consultant companies and a facilitator. But all of that money has gone without a definitive answer as to what's going to happen to the hospital ground. That is a hugely valuable piece of property, probably the most valuable open space, town-owned property in Metro West, and we should be proud of it, and we should be very, very careful in what we're going to do with it, and we don't know at this point. The Selectmen have gone out with a RFI request for information, okay? When we get that back, we'll know more. But remember, when we bought this property of 440 units looming from the state, we thought that was awful. We never got a chance, in town meeting assembled, to look at options on that property. There are other uses up there than commercial. You really think that's a good commercial spot? I don't. Do you really want, they're talking 3, 350 houses now? Westboro put in over 700 on a third of the acreage at Westboro State Hospital we're developing.
Okay, John.
So, I understand, Scott, you want it wrapped up. My wrap-up is this, support the Warrant Committee, they've worked hard, I congratulate the moderator on his appointments on that committee, they're good people, very good people. So you really restrain your emotions, which are favorable towards the cultural aspects. Great supporter, Jean Minio, and her aspirations was the word that was used by the Warrant Committee, I hope those aspirations can be fulfilled, but I doubt that that's going to happen easily or soon. Think hard about it before you vote for this, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents who are going to speak? So we have, okay, just 30 seconds each, if you're all proponents of this article. Kristen?
Kristen Donner, 92 Green Street, real brief, I think that many of the arguments that have been made against it are actually arguments for it. I think the fact that the master plan hasn't been ratified yet, and that we don't know exactly what the hospital's going to be, is, makes this a good time to put our fingers on the chapel and the property for the art center, because we know what we want to do with that, and where there's a lot of money to be made, the best plans can get cannibalized, and we should protect this asset. Right now, move forward with a yes vote, thank you.
Okay, 30 seconds each, please.
Jim Nail, 97 Hartford Street, I expect when you hear the RFIs come back from the developers, that they'll want to own the whole property. With any apologies to my fellow citizens who may be developers, developers always want more, more houses on a parcel of land, more exemptions from zoning, more support to put in the infrastructure. But I think they're looking at it wrong. I think that having the art center there will make this a more attractive property to the people they want to sell the housing units to. I believe that giving the Selectmen, which as I understand the motion here, it simply gives them flexibility when they're having these discussions to say, "We can move the art center ahead before you start the housing, what do you think about that?" And I think a smart developer will go, "That's fantastic," because now, when I build my houses, when people come to look to consider buying it, they're going to see activity, they're going to see this place is connected to the town, they're going to see excitement, they're going to be excited, and I'll make more money. So as someone said, developers do it for the money. I think this, moving ahead with the cultural center can be negotiated with those developers to show them it's a good thing to let the town keep control of this and to move forward now with the art center.
Thank you. Microphone number one.
Bob Torme, 36 Harding Street, in support of Article 4. People may say that Article 4 puts the horse before the cart before the horse, but what this really does is it puts the horse and cart together and gets this state hospital property moving for us. The, this, as Joanna said, the article does not compel the Selectmen, but authorizes them to enter into this lease. They've been part of this process for a very long time. They anticipated the master plan, they read and studied the master plan, and they know how central this cultural arts center is to that plan and the success of this campus. So therefore, you know, this idea, this concept made it from four scenarios to two to one. It made the finals, and right now, Article 4 puts this wonderful plan into the right hands.
Thank you. Microphone one.
Hi, Teresa James, I actually was on the Medfield State Hospital Master Planning Committee, but this is my opinion, because I've been through the process and I've seen the master plan, I know it intimately, I also see what's been done with the cultural arts from the Cultural Alliance Committee. And I just want to speak out in favor of this article, because this article is a plan of action, and there has been a lot of details, yes, there's more details to work out, and we need to figure that out. But personally, I trust what I heard Jean say, that this action in this article is a collaboration article, because there's still more work with the Board of Selectmen and the Warrant Committee and the Cultural Alliance Committee, and they will come together and do the best thing for our town and our community in moving this forward. We should continue the legacy of the Medfield State Hospital as a program and as a place of healing for the mind, body, and soul through the use of the arts. And so enabling this action, as we heard before, will really increase the value of that as developers look at the property and they come look at that master plan. So let's enable them to do just that.
Thank you. So we have two more comments before the vote, microphone number two.
Jonathan Gray, 87 North Street, 19 years ago, I was on the Historical Commission with David Temple and Enslin and other people who I'm sure are in this room, and we were talking about what we would do with the state hospital 19 years ago. So we've had a lot of delays, and we've been asking for a lot more information for a very long time. We will never have perfect information, right? There is no zero-risk proposition in the world. I'm a banker, I can tell you that. At some point, we need to move ahead, I think this is the time.
Thank you. Be fitting for you to have the final comment here, Bill.
Okay, Bill Mosaro, Arrow Green Way, nine years ago, I came before town meeting to ask for $100,000 to hire a consultant to help me fight the half-baked cleanup that DCAM was going to do in the Charles River. And with all due respect to the Warrant Committee, the Warrant Committee argued against it. I kept up my efforts, three years later, we came, three months later, or four months later, we came back before town meeting again, and we did get the $100,000. We hired a consultant, we fought DCAM, we've got the overlook, we've got the vistas and the views that were there 100 years ago. So I speak in the interests of the residents of Medfield, I speak in the interest of what I think is the best thing for the hospital. I support the rehabilitation at no cost to the town of the lead chapel, and I want to point out that every building that a developer has to rehab runs the risk of him needing more units. So if the committee can take away a million or $2 million from the rehab cost, that's probably 50 or 60 units you're not getting up there. So again, I urge you all, please, support this article. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to put this motion to a vote. Motion is to authorize the Board of Selectmen to lease a portion of the former Medfield State Hospital, including the lead chapel and the infirmary, with surrounding land up to 99 years for purposes of developing and operating an arts and cultural center. All in favor? It does require a two-thirds vote, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, if I could have a show of hands? And opposed?
Opposed.
Let's go to the show of hands, in favor? Yeah. If you're still here, raise your hand. No. In favor, all opposed? Okay, I'm going to deem that it does carry, but the two-thirds required. Let me thank people if I could, I want to thank the Warrant Committee, we have three members of the Warrant Committee who, this is their last night, I want to thank Tom Marie and Tom Mulvoy and Abby Marble. I want to say, Chris Allen, who is here, he's supposed to be doing the Patriots game in Buffalo, if he was there, he'd know that the Patriots are ahead 9-3 at halftime. I want to thank everybody from the schools, they did a great job in getting this all set up. Thanks, everybody on the executive branch, and for Medfield TV. I need a motion to dissolve the special town meeting, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, have a great holiday season, be safe. Bye.